Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. So this time we will have... We're getting used to this new software system, so... Commissioner Unruh ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to start with just a scripture reading and then we'll begin to pray. So this is Colossians 3:16 and 17. Let the message about Christ and all of its richness fill your lives. Teach and counsel each other with all the wisdom he gives. And sing psalms and hymns and spiritual songs to God with thankful hearts. And whatever you do or say, do it as a representative of the Lord Jesus Christ in giving thanks through him to God the Father. Let us pray. Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for all that you're doing in our community. We thank you for the mighty way in which you are blessing us just as a region and a state. Father, thank you for protecting our first responders, the police department and the fire department, the EMS and the sheriff. And Father, we're so grateful for all that they do. Now, we just ask for a peaceful, living Father in our community. And Father, we thank you for your continued blessing and your continued wisdom in all the decisions that we as a city council make. We give you glory and honor. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Unruh. Next item will be the minutes. If there was no corrections offered, shall stand approved. Okay? Now move on to the next item. Public comment. So, sorry, it's just neat font here is kind of making me jump around. So, public comment, which is a time where anybody in the audience would wish to come up and stand to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So when you come to the mic, please state your name for the record. And please come up.
Accidentally only wrote five. I grabbed the wrong stack. I wanted a mat to be able to have one, too. I'll bring you guys some. I'm Jeanette Turpin. What I'm handing out to you right now is for Garden Academy Early Learning Center. So I represent two different organizations. One of them is Garden Academy Early Learning Center, which is the childcare center that we've been working to open. And the other one that I represent is County Childcare and Early Learning Network. And that is the one that we're using to bring more childcare into town and to help sustain the childcare that's there right now and making systems for other childcare providers and helping with continuing education. And actually, right now, we're talking about possibly getting an association for benefits so that home providers might be able to join as an association and have an option for healthcare, health insurance. So that's the network. But this that I brought to you today is for the center that the network helped start. And you guys also helped start it, if you'll recall, granting us a very large sum of money from COVID for the building on Third Street, Thompson. And so we did it. And it took me this long to get here, sorry. It's very... a lot of things to open a childcare center. But we're open. We got our license in November, our official license. We had our temporary for about a month before that. And we would like to... We don't have a date yet, but we're going to have kind of a... You know, after we've been open for a while, ground opening. You guys know these things. And I would love for you guys to come and see it. I've had so many people come through and just say how glad they are that that building has been like repurposed for this because a lot of people have happy memories of being with family, but also very sad memories. And they have said to come in and see it transformed and be cheerful and happy has been a really big... Has had an impact on them. They feel better, you know? Like, what, you know, life moves on and that is a good thing. So we're doing great. We're ramping up pretty slowly so that we're being careful about our money that we're using and stuff. And we were able to get a childcare accelerator grant also. And so we're using that money for this time where it's a weird transition where we're getting people on board and filling up slowly and stuff like that. So we're about to open a second infant toddler classroom for zero to three. And then we have all the spots for two and a half to... To Lincoln Falls Primary School. So we're just excited and ready to grow and have really good teachers already, which is something that we were, you know, worried about. It's proof of concept, you know, what will happen. And it's going really well and we have awesome families and it's a great community, just like we hoped it would be. So I really appreciate that the city commission helped with that. Like, we would not have a childcare center if that wasn't for that. So we appreciate it.
Jeanette, how many kids can you serve totally? When it's... I know that you're, like you said, ramping them slowly and I understand. But how many children can you serve?
So our original plan was to do 60 because there's a model that financially works. But because I'm there and I'm doing the network stuff as well, we actually have the ability to license all of our rooms without messing up finances. Kind of complicated, but I'd be happy to explain more. So we actually ended up, the licensing person suggested to do it for the most. So we actually are licensed for 94.
Wow, that's a great...
I don't want to get to that just because of community and personalism. And we didn't want to have a big, major childcare center. We want it to be around town, you know? But in the meantime, if we need to fill up to 94 while we're waiting to get other classrooms and then we can have people get closer to home or whatever, we're happy to do that. We're taking on what needs to be taken on right now.
On the back of your... For sure, there's a direct link to the waitlist? So does that mean there is a long waitlist now? Do you have a number for that?
Infants and toddlers, we have a waitlist, which is why we're opening up that second infant toddler center, our room first. That would not be the way to do it if we didn't have this grant. But like I said, we want to serve what's needed because we have the ability to right now. So we do have a waitlist for that. For the preschool age, we don't... We're enrolling people. We had three sisters that are all preschool age, two and a half to five, that enrolled the other day because they lost their home daycare provider and they enrolled and were there the next day. And they come at 6:45 in the morning and they leave when we close at 5:45 and dad's off doing what he needs to do to make money. And yeah, it's really fulfilling to be able to take care of people like we've been wanting to for so long.
So I want to ask another question. Like a playground, I know that there... Is it going to be on the... Be the south side of the building? I know when, as you get bigger, well, is that where you're planning on putting a playground? Or is it...
No, so the south side is just the infant toddler playground.
Okay.
And right now, it's just grassing with another surface so that they can do stuff. So we're going to ramp that up to... It was the outside area for the...
Oh, okay.
And they have this like walking path, like a concrete walking path, which is a perfect tricycle path. And we're doing more natural stuff, so we're slowly getting in. Like, we have logs to balance on. And we have like a cabin-type house that we're putting together. And we're going to build up around the trees, a treehouse basically, but like, you know, appropriate for four and five year olds.
No, thank you.
So that's where we...
Well, thank you, Jeanette. You've got a great deal to watch, kind of you hand in hand in this and then also your board members as well.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your hard work and effort.
Yes, and thank you for letting us have Derek be on our board as well. It's very awesome having people connected to so much and just having so much different input, you know, and being able to kind of think community-based instead of just thinking about just the center itself.
Sure.
So...
All right.
All right.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Mayor and commissioners, item 6A. The governing bodies asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim April 14th through 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. All those opposed? Motion passed. This time, I think we have some people who want to come into the room and I'll read the proclamation and then we could take a photo after. So... Okay. Whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is designated in the second week of April every year, recognized by our nation since 1991. And whereas over 5,700 primary and secondary public safety facilities field more than 2400... or 240 million calls each year. And whereas the telecommunications that keep our 911 system running are the lifeline between the public and our first responders, serving as the convoy as they ensure that the days, crises, and challenges are met and contributing to the apprehension of criminals, treatment of patients, and extinguishing of fires. And whereas public safety telecommunications exhibit professionalism, knowledge, and compassion during the performance of their jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week and publicly salute the service of 911 telecommunications in our community and in the communities across the nation who do their part to help save millions of lives every day. Thank you for your dedication and sacrifices you make to create a better and safer world for the public. Signed and sealed the second day of April 2024.
So appreciate that. Just an update kind of on what we have going on. They usually do some special activities during the week of. One of the things that they're doing this year is adopt a communicator. Very good response right now, so I can't tell you if all spots are filled, but we definitely... We can probably double it. So if multiple people want to adopt a communicator, we'll be more than happy to oblige that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 6B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. I do have the proclamation here and I believe there will be an event that I will read that at, so I'll get that on my calendar.
Item 7A. Staff will provide an update on the recent tornado and emergency response from March 24th, 2024. So I'm going to invite Chief Pruitt and Chief Ursick up to the podium.
So we have a presentation that is up already on desktop.
Wow. You want me to click or...
He's got it.
Cool, even better.
We have to make sure that we're talking into the microphone. What we did is we kind of put together, from the public safety side and then public works, public utility, kind of just an update on what happened with the tornado, now that they're calling it a tornado, when it hit Garden City and what the response was, just to kind of outline what the resources and personnel that we applied to that. And then we have a bunch of pictures just to kind of get an idea of the damage or what we were dealing with. Here's the agenda. One of the things that we like in public safety is the acronyms, so we'll explain those when we get to that. As far as personnel, I'll let Chief Ursick talk a little bit through what he had because there's some stuff on there that might not be familiar to everybody with the callback and that type of thing. But from the police department side of the house, we had 32 officers respond to that. And then we had a bunch of help from some of our partner agencies. Highway Patrol sent us five troopers. Sheriff's Office has three people out there. Then I'll let Chief Ursick talk about something else.
Yeah, I'm a fire designer.
Chief, I'm going to stop you. I'm sorry. There's a 115 public hearing, so we'll do that. This is a good... And that way, you're not interrupted when we get to like the good, exciting part.
And we'll be followed by the public meeting at 115.
Sorry. Good practice.
Go ahead and open the 115 public hearing.
Yeah, Mayor and commissioners, the 115 public hearing is for the consideration of adopting development plan and establish a reinvestment housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase 3A by ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2978-2024. And you've opened the public hearing, so I think a staff report by Alicia first and then anybody here to speak on the matter. I know the developer's present, so... And then following all the public comment, you can close the public hearing and then the commission is freed up at that point in time to ask anybody questions. Alicia.
Mayor and commissioners, as required by the RHID statute, the Hunter's Glen Phase 3A development is for the governing body to adopt the attached development plan and to establish the RHID. This action is the last step the development needs to take for the governing body in the RHID process. Hunter's Glen Phase 3A is generally located in the rest of North Third Street and north of Leewood Avenue. This development will consist of 12 lots in which the Developer Boygoes Development Corporation intends to build two duplexes and 10 fourplexes. Based on feasibility study, the $2,765,025.69 will not be fully recouped within the 25-year period. Therefore, they would need the maximum amount of time as allowed by state statute. The projections show by year 25, the RHID revenue will have only been approximately $2.3 million. According to our current Community Housing Assessment Team study, to meet our housing needs, we need to build 1,395 units by 2030. And the governing body has set a goal of 4,000 units by 2030. From 2020 to 2023, 198 RHID units have been completed and 18 RHID units in 2024. According to our CHAP study and the rate of housing development, Garden City shows a need for units to be built within this development. If the ordinance is adopted, the Board of County Commissioners and USD 457 as taxing entities will have 30 days in which to evaluate the proposed RHID. Should a taxing entity determine it has an adverse effect on their jurisdiction, then the taxing entity will need to adopt a resolution stating such. If no such resolutions are passed, then the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, any of the taxing entities pass such a resolution, the city will need to take action and repeal the ordinance as required by state statute. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance or the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. SAG recommends the governing body approve the attached ordinance. And for the fiscal note, the developer will be using private financing to fund the eligible cost of the RHID. The city will reimburse property tax increments to the developer over the life of the RHID, which is up to 25 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed $2,765,025.69. And then the developer is here as well.
Any questions from the audience or would you like to come up and say anything? Just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. I'm Michael Snodgrass. I'm the presidency of Portis Development Corporation. We're in the novel project. I won't cease to read that development. Hunter Glen Phase 1. So this is an extension thereof of Phase 3A, 3B skipped over to... Get back to 2 here in a second. As we apply for state funding for that. We should know about that in May. So hopefully we can... My goal is to get it all knocked out here very soon, so we'll be back before you if we're approved by the state for Hunter Glen 2 sometime very soon after May and start that process then for the RHID. But and no idea would want to say, well, I understand our TSCR but it's not part of the RHID. We intend to build the next TSCR building as part of this Phase 3A. So that will... I mean, 10,000 square foot rebuilding. That will, I think, 60, whatever number it is for children and then off space and in space as well. So we're excited to get started. We just finished one, so it's time to start.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 29...
Oops, we got to move this.
Sorry.
Any other public comments this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the meeting or the hearing. Any further discussion?
Sorry to drop the gun. I remove that we approve ordinance number 2978-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
I did just want to say, I appreciate all of the infrastructure putting in, like when sidewalks and also the trail and all those things. I mean, those are things that, I mean, make that whole area really nice. And it's been looking better and better all the time. So you've done a fabulous job with the area. So thank you and they're very nicely built and nice-looking places, so.
All right, I'll invite the chiefs back up. For your awareness, in nine minutes, there will be another public hearing.
Yeah, so on the part of our response, I'll pull up on you that they had... George had hit it. Went ahead and activated a callback and activated our rescue team. Also alerted dodges of the tornado strike and notified the state for maybe possible state assets depending on how bad the structure damage was.
So as you can see, we also had some folks from county that came out and helped. The manager came out. We had three from the sheriff's office. One of the public works personnel came out. And then we had city administration that worked at the EFL portion. Some of you guys saw that on the basis. Some of the resources that we had out there. When we say command vehicles, it's... Command vehicles, it's things that we roll around in, unarmed type of things. But we had 10 of those out there. John can talk about the fire apparatus. Maybe Sarah, right? And then Mike, Michael, talk a little bit about the works and utilities and some of the resources that they had out there. What I did not look very good at was the police vehicles that we had out about that day.
Yeah, on the fire apparatus, just because the tornado strike happened, we don't... So we can hear what it calls, the sub-likes. Within that incident, so I'm trying to develop a perimeter in the place and see how big, big and how bad is that so we can get resources coming in and everywhere needs. Thank you, Royce, for the tether is that Kansas Pass 46 or that region last that we joined in 2012. Carries all the struts and shoring operations. A lot of houses getting those houses of day air class, so.
One of the things that Mike and his guys helped us out with was tracking John. Like John said, the perimeter was... We didn't know what all had been hit or what all had been affected. So having an effective perimeter, it was kind of a moving target for a little bit of time, so. Some of the 911 center activities, just to give an idea of how many calls came in and what they were dealing with. This is three people dealing with at overload calls. So there's a lot of stuff they were dealing with. And we have a program called tactical dispatch. So we brought some tactical dispatchers that came out to the scene and helped on scene with some of the incidents out there.
And then on the National Public Safety contact and then they're now indicating tornadoes, so following them and getting them out the next day to mitigate damage and showing the brief path and the tornado strike. And then go ahead and classify it as a EM, EF1. So they estimate a 3.9 mile an hour, approximately two and a half miles long, visual, yard wide, strike from the available to the touristy goalpost at the currency tax school. And there was a visual industrial property damage. Six hundred of those were broke out that we assisted with boarding up and hypergrowth were boarded up at night. Make sure that when some storm came in, then that area relocated. Then going over the TACO map, this is an asset we have from the State Farm Marshals. So it stands for search and rescue common operating platform. So this is real time, we call them, we activated, they kind of identify our boundaries. You can see in the green and the rescue transport team comes in and start the recon team on the search and rescue, search three options building. So yellow, you see it as an affected tornado, affected the structure and addresses major damage and yellows moderate damage. And as you see the shadow line there, that's a predicted... Well, projected, preliminary projected tornado path as we know with the National Public Safety attempted and I filled out and went up by the high school. So setting up those two teams, Team 1, which is the round Team yellows, the Team 2, they start walking. How bad is that and how do we have enough resources to mitigate the situation? So that's residential stuff. There was in addition, you see several structures affected by major damage to water. And then moving a little bit north on the next one, we see a little bit of commercial property, Team 1, Team 2 searching some vehicles. And we can see this real time back in the command feathers and insert, you know, some resources to help mitigate any problems, whether it be lighter gas, structure collapse, or a new surge.
So this is a video, a video from that day of kind of where it started. So this is kind of south of town. Just to kind of show a little bit of the rotation as it progresses to town.
So our National Public Safety, this is a different path of the tornado. You see, started to get a bag of it all the way up to the high school. Bounced a few million zero and EF1, see the EF1, the nine mile an hour mark. We're probably in that Wilson edition to our sports and roads now.
I want to continue on with your closest.
Yeah.
Well, you'll see here, we'll just go through some pictures that shows some of the DMH. These are from a drone, so that's why you're getting the bird's eye view. We flew a drone over that area and what you're looking at is the south end of like the core Center Marshals that building. So that's what you're seeing there. Here's some other stuff. You can see the roofs and the fence that were impacted. We'll just kind of zip through these. You see something that you want. But it really followed that first alley in the Wilson edition. This is real close to where the command post, we finally set up the command post and they were already about to put the tar over their roof. I think the next day, they just re-ruined that building, so they were on. Some of the public works got already out, starting to help clean up. Some of the lessons learned. We spent a lot of time talking through what our warning system here is. And I think there's going to be some more updates of our protocols and policies. Also some more research on if there's better ways to get alerts out to folks. But right now, we have AlertSense and MyGCPS. Those are two that you have to subscribe to. But is there a better way that we can do it? Kind of like an Amber Alert system or something that activates your phone and see if we can do that on a regionalized level? So we're in talks right now and doing some research on what it takes to do that. Communication is always something that's going to be on our lessons learned slide because we can always do better at. One of the things that we found out is we have a bunch of people coming in from different organizations, trying to get them all on the same radio channel and talk to them. It's something that we struggle with. And I think that we've got a pretty good system on it, but it's still affecting us on this one.
Incident, and you'd like to man. Over the past ten years, we're making sense. We're getting better. Always dissect it and try to make it even more efficient. So working on that. We had a deep reschedule yesterday. working on that. We have a deep reschedule yesterday, where we'll put the center next to every hour of the day, and there is the improvement, so.
In the interest of time, the last one is always something that we can do a little bit better. And I guess we'll take questions after your public meeting.
Yeah, thanks for the job.
Thank you, chiefs.
We'll bring you back if you've got questions. Okay, so it is 1:30. We'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing, consideration of the adoption of the development plan to establish the reinvestment housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase 3B.
Mayor, Commissioner, similar to the last one, this is Hunter Glen Phase 3B, located in the same area, north, or west of North Third Street and north of Leewood Avenue. Eighteen lots, they have two, two places, and sixteen four places. Based on the feasibility study, it's about $30,873,000, $121.60. That will not be approved over the 25-year period. So through our projections by year 25, the RCHD revenue would have only been across $23.49 million. And I won't go into all of the same details that I want to go over again. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance, or the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the attached ordinance. And for the fiscal note, the developer will be using private financing to cover the local costs of the RCHD. The city will reimburse property tax increments to the developer over the life of the RCHD, which is over 25 years. The amount of the property tax distributions can obviously be $3,873,121.60.
This is ordinance number?
If approved, 2979-2024.
There any public comments for this item? Any additional information from the developer? All right. Seeing none, I guess we'll go ahead and close the hearing. If there's any questions or?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 2979-2024.
Aye, second.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, chiefs, do you want to come up and take some questions? Or will you come up and take some questions?
We're here to answer the questions, you have what happened.
So I appreciate you, the presentation. And a lot of people commented how much the after effect meant, you know, coming on online and talking about. And so that's something I may hope you continue and actually do more even during. You know, one of the comments was, people kept wondering, so where do you tune anymore? We used to have radio stations that were live. We used to have like television stations that would immediately go to that. And, you know, this time, there really was no place to go but the city of Garden City. And so I think even coming on when you did, it made a big difference. So I mean, hopefully that's something that you want to consider doing all the way through anytime this happens, because, I mean, people are looking to the city. So can you explain, because a lot of people are asking, so why the three different sirens, and then they would quit? Does that mean it's all clear? And I said, I don't think so, obviously, but.
Yeah, I can, so right now, currently, communications services, three different areas, so Southwind and Holcombe, and then the city, which includes airport and the golf course. So three different systems, same kind of technical stuff, but three different systems. When they toggle the tornado sirens in the city, so city, airport, and golf course, they stay on for 10 minutes, and then, I'm sorry, stay on for one minute, and then turn off for 10 minutes, and then they react. So that's the three sirens that you're, Holcombe and Southwind, when they toggle, so it's a constant on, and then they have to manually turn it off. So we're researching how to reprogram, if we can upgrade, what that looks like. So there'll be private future discussions on that, but hopefully that answers.
Yeah, no, that did. I didn't know the answer, you know. And unfortunately, Kansas, they always think when the siren goes off, that the danger's passed. But, you know, that's not the case. The other thing is, like, as far as the ability to go ahead and broadcast immediately, starting at an incident, is that something that we were considering, or?
What do you say about that?
Well, when they came on at the end of it, talking about what happened, but during the happening, yeah, yeah.
So we do have the ability, but we were wearing a bunch of different hats.
Right, exactly.
And so Matt and Aaron Reyes and Yanki all took care of kind of answering some of those questions and handling that initially, trying to figure out which was up.
Oh, yeah.
Was pretty, we had a lot of our hands full pretty quickly. And then once everything settled down, and we figured out kind of how much damage, no injuries, and what we needed, that was when we came back in and were able to put that together.
Chief, for the fire sirens, sorry, the tornado sirens, you said that one minute on, and then there's like a buffer for 10 minutes? Is it automatically just goes through the next cycle, or?
And so our communicators have to set a timer, and then it's up to them. So that's why when they have all of those activities out there, so that's one of the things that they also have to take care of.
Gotcha.
They have some protocols that they have to follow, like calling national weather service and that type of thing. So there's a lot going on when there's a big event going on upstairs.
Makes sense.
I mean, you hate real live practices, but I mean, this was a really, like you said, an opportunity, not that we want another tornado in western Kansas, or Garden City especially, but.
We just signed it, we should have a hard one.
I, yeah, I think we need to, also.
And I would say a pretty unique circumstance, too, that a storm that had produced tornadic activity wasn't picked up by NWS, who now with modern technology, we're almost sounding stuff based off of National Weather Service, who can identify something through radar faster than a spotter's going to identify it in the field. This was, you know, literally not on NWS's radar, and we reacted off of spotter activity. And for the call to be made, for dispatch to go ahead and activate the siren without NWS confirmation, I think was big.
Yeah, and prudent, yep.
Yeah. And, yeah, and then it goes to, okay, how do we alert? Our sirens are outdoor warning sirens. They're not, they're not your television, they're not your cell phone. As the chief's mentioned, we'll investigate the extent to which we could be allowed to break into that, like the National Weather Service can, and give you, give everybody that's geocoded to be in a certain area, an alert. But right now, that technology isn't available, or that authorization isn't available to us. So in an incident like this, could have we broken and alerted people indoors, as well as outdoors, with something that had a little bit more information on it? Again, I'm not sure in real time what that alert would have been, other than just get inside, this is a violent storm, because not even when we came on our Facebook Live, call it a media briefing, but there wasn't any presence of any media. So it was just a community briefing. Is, in that briefing, are we, you know, what are we even talking about that happened? So the first couple hours, I think these guys did an excellent job. And their personnel and the agencies that supported us in the event, did a good job of checking and making sure folks were safe, folks were alive, we knew the extent of the damage, we had the perimeter of the area protected, so that that assessment could get done, so that we could have all the information that we had by a reasonable hour on Sunday night, and then give some sort of an update to the community of what happened, and what can you expect moving forward if you experience some damage. Not all the questions were answered at that point in time. We didn't even know what the weather service might end up calling this thing, straight line winds, tornado, whatever. But we knew it had done damage, and we knew we had some cleanup to do. Mike, did you want to address some of the cleanup in the days following? And is there anything else out there that if folks are watching, or the commission takes questions from citizens that they might need to know about further cleanup that might be needed?
Sure. A little bit of history there. As you know, we, public works, we did a little bit of equipment and started up from the residents, we brought in two of the great big roll-offs, put them in strategic locations, so that it was easier for the homeowners to dispose of that. We all brought in some new ones. We went in the very next day, started getting up stuff that they sent out, closing the curb, so we could take all that. Ninety percent of it's been picked up already. Some of the fences in the backyards are still kind of a storm about, but they're working on that. So we've, I believe we just picked up the last roll-off container yesterday, and somehow we're just advising citizens about to set their stuff out next to the curb, like our normal spring cleanup. We're in that process. Of course, it started yesterday. And then when we get to that area, the cleanup was left. So they did a really good job. So, and next we started the police and fire side.
Yeah, we appreciate all your efforts in this, you know, what we can learn from it and move on. And I'm sure it's going to put other things in motion as we move forward. So we're glad that you guys are out there and able to help out folks. So thanks for the report. Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just heard a lot of good comments from the community on the first responders, as well as the city, and helping out with the damage and cleaning up, and helping with the cleanup in the area. But just a lot of positives from the community on how we responded, and then the after effect. And then, of course, also the, kind of the news brief, because again, looking towards the media, people were saying they were turning on their TV and the radio, and there was nothing. And then we got the response from, you know, the media response from the city. And that kind of helped alleviate some fears and just understand kind of what happened and what took place. So kind of gave the community a little bit of relief. I mean, not a relief, because we did have a tornado, but gave people the information they kind of needed to know. And that's what I've heard, Mr. Commissioner. So, thank you guys very much.
Everybody ready to move on?
Yes.
All right. 7B, presentation of master activity report for the police department, IT, and 7C, which is the sales tax report from service and finance, are the only two staff reports on this agenda. Do you have any questions over either of those? Or comments? Okay. 8A is a growing list of meetings. Looks like there's several to choose from in April. Item nine is the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2600-2024A.
Mayor, I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2600-2024A. Second.
Okay, it's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion pass.
All right, we've completed 10A and 10B. Those were the public hearings. We're ready for 10C, and that is an environmental resolution. The governing body is asked to consider a resolution that would remove nuisance conditions from 306 North 12th Street. And if approved, it would be resolution 3108-2024. Trent.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. 306 North 12, we've got some couches outside. We decided with the Department of Nuisance, Fire, and Mission Letter, on two different occasions, February 16th, 2024, and March 7th, 2024, and with no contact from the residents. The alternative before you today, the government may approve the attached resolution, which will allow staff to eliminate that nuisance. Or alternative number two, the government may not approve the attached resolution. Staff's recommendation is, the government may approve the attached resolution. The fiscal note is, if the cost here by the opponent will be assessed the property.
Any discussion?
I move that we approve resolution number 3108-2024. A second.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion pass. Thanks, Trent.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to provide direction on how to proceed with the interlocal agreement for joint neighborhood and development services with the Fannie County Board of Commissioners. Danielle's not here, but.
Do I got this one?
Okay, all right. City and county staff have been meeting regarding neighborhood and development services since June of 2022. Beginning in November of 2022, those discussions started to more narrowly focus on process improvements and changes to the existing neighborhood and services, neighborhood and development services interlocal agreement that was last updated in 2015. Over the past 22 months, there have been approximately 14 meetings between city and county staff to negotiate options for how to proceed with service delivery of planning, zoning, code enforcement, and inspections to Garden City and Fannie County residents. There have also been a number of updates to both governing bodies during this time. Since the beginning of these discussions, there have been some key variables driving the negotiations. First and foremost, there is a desire by both agencies to keep strong working relationships across the organizations. The county has expressed an interest to have a larger role in making to both the planning commission and board of county commissioners recommendations related to projects that occur in unincorporated Fannie County. The city has expressed an interest in clearly identifying roles and responsibilities, so that expectations can be clearly communicated to customers, and there isn't a duplication of efforts. Over the 22 months, there have been a number of topics addressed. Both city and county staff are requesting direction regarding how to proceed. There are four options for the governing body. There are four, I scrolled and lost my spot. There are four. Where am I? Or? Okay, I'm there. There are four options for each governing body to consider regarding how to move forward with neighborhood and development services. Option one, the first option would keep the existing agreement with modifications related to sanitary sewer inspections, update reference to the current building code, clarifying reporting requirements, and add clarifications regarding the code enforcement process. Option two, the second, this option would be to proceed with the consultant type agreement that has been drafted and already presented and approved by this, presented and approved by the city commission at your February 6th, 2024 meeting. This option would maintain a joint planning commission, and the city would serve as the staff liaison. Additionally, the city would continue to complete all building inspections. Option three, the third option would be to direct staff to draft an agreement that would move all planning and zoning responsibilities for projects in unincorporated Fannie County to county staff. The only exceptions would be for building code reviews, which would still be completed by the city's chief building official, and fire code reviews, which would still be completed by the city's fire marshal. This option would maintain a joint planning commission, and the city would serve as the staff liaison. Additionally, the city would continue to provide initial review of the code enforcement complaints, as well as complete all building inspections. Option four would be to terminate the agreement, and the city and county would be responsible for providing all planning, zoning, code enforcement, and inspection services for their respective jurisdictions. There would need to be a subsequent discussion about the joint planning commission, and whether any additional action would be required to keep that as a joint operation, or if there is a desire to have separate bodies for that as well. And actually, there's five options based on an action, I think this memo had indicated four, but since writing it, there was a fifth option added. On Monday, March 25th, the board of county commissioners received an update regarding the ongoing discussions between city and county staff for neighborhood and development services. As a follow-up, on Thursday, March 28th, county staff reached out requesting a meeting with both city and county staff, along with two commissioners from each governing body. If the city commission has a desire to have a meeting with county staff and elected personnel outside of a public meeting, staff would request the governing body identify which two members they would like to attend, so a meeting date can be identified. Additionally, in that communication, county staff recalled that the county had drafted and presented to the board of county commissioners. Commissioners a June 19th, 2023 regular meeting, an agreement for the city's consideration. That agreement was subsequently presented to the city commission at a pre-meeting workshop on August 15th, 2023. The county was invited to attend that pre-meeting workshop and was represented by County Councilor Kara Schartz. During that meeting, the city commission indicated they were not in support of moving that agreement forward. This agreement is also included as an attachment for reference. So your alternatives are a reflection of those five options, and of course, the ever-present option of deciding something else. So those are kind of the five, five general descriptions of the options. Before you, we request you identify your preferred direction, if you can reach a consensus or majority on that. Also, those that are acceptable to remain in play, and maybe more importantly, if there are some options in here that are unacceptable paths for you, I think articulating that not just to staff, but publicly, so that the county commission would be aware, would be helpful as we continue these negotiations. Again, we'd really like to bring conclusion to this discussion that has been going on now for close to two years.
I guess I didn't, I didn't see the county commission meeting. Do they, were they, did they have the opportunity to look at the agreement that we approved, the county commission?
By having the opportunity, do you mean was it sent over to them, or was it placed on their agenda?
Was it on their agenda?
No.
Or did they discuss it during the meeting?
No.
Or, okay.
But it was sent to them.
So it was sent, but was never, but they never took it up as a discussion item on their...
No. I would presume they were aware of it, because you passed it in a public meeting. But I, yeah, I can't answer as to why it wasn't on there. It just wasn't.
I guess my initial thought is, the direction that we take, it seems that they're going to still want some sort of follow-up meeting with two of the commissioners, regardless. So regardless. But one of my first initial thoughts is, I think the city has a lot of great resources, great amazing staff, that we can offer to the county, but not really to the county, but it's more to the builders surrounding our building in the county. So I definitely do still want sort of agreement with them, in hopes that we can still offer our services to the builders and other entities building in the incorporated area of Fannie County.
I think the consultant type agreement was very well laid out, and it really structured a way to protect all our staff, but also to inform each of the governing bodies and each of the staffs exactly what was expected. And, I mean, I was under the impression it was presented to them, and I guess I didn't, I didn't ask the county commission if it was, but I thought the agreement, the consultant type agreement was very honoring of our current agreement and also this position with them. I'm not in opposition to having two city commissioners and city staff, I mean, with them, but I, because I think there's going to be some type of that anyway. However, the, I had a hard time following the county proposed interlokal agreement, printed them out side by side to try to figure out, so what was different and what was, what was the changes that they were proposing. And really, a lot of those changes that they had talked about were incorporated in this consultant type of agreement. And I did reach out to kind of our city council and say, hey, I want to make sure that we looked at this, you know, at our agreement, and I know that, I mean, they wrote our agreement, but I didn't know if they'd had a chance to look at the county proposed agreement. But I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of the consultant type of agreement that we have, we've approved and presented. And if it wasn't taken up, then maybe that's something if you do take two commissioners and the city staff over, talk about, hey, could we present what we have already talked about, and we think it delineates the roles, we think it honors both governing bodies, we have still that working relationship. But as far as scrapping everything that our city staff, and, you know, and again, the city is the expert in the planning and development. They've done it for a long time, and we've really spent a lot of time upgrading all our staff, but also we've done this, the city has done this a long time, and provided these services for how many years, since, you know, 2015. So that's, you know, I'm curious about now the upgrade in agreement. I know they do have some staff on board that can take some of that, but I thought we honored that in our consultant type of agreement.
Matt, so in the last paragraph before the alternatives, the second last sentence during that meeting, the city commission indicated that they were not in support of moving that agreement forward. Is that agreement any of the alternatives?
Yes, that's option five. I think that's just at the, at the recollection of county staff, you know, they had indicated that, hey, we'd send a proposal over as well last June, and they're correct. They did. You reviewed that at a pre-meeting, and didn't, didn't, not only didn't express a desire to move forward, but kind of indicated in the workshop, there wasn't, there wasn't a consensus to move forward with that.
Right.
So the county proposed interlocal agreement was presented a year ago to the city commission, and there was no desire to move forward by the city commission at that time. Now, different governing body composition for us, so, you know, they pointed it out, whether they pointed it out because they didn't think you took it up, they should have had representation at that meeting. Or, you know, I don't even know, I don't know that that's still in play on their end either. They brought it up in the email on Thursday, and so it's been added as a, as an option, although already considered and dismissed by this governing body at one point in time.
I'm going to ask a question to council, and I'm not sure if they've reviewed or, but does any of the county proposed interlocal agreement put us at any risk of potential, like, you know, risk of lawsuit because of their, because it did say in there they could change their decision on codes and whatnot, but is that, are we liable for any of their decision-making on that part?
Commissioner, we'd be happy at some point to discuss the liability that the commission might face, but we don't answer those questions in meetings.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the county. I think we discussed that at a pre-meeting, and we weren't comfortable then, and I don't know about now. I don't, I don't think there's much of a change from what we had already, what we presented. I think it was, there were some very detailed things. I think that those could be worked out. But, so I'm leaning toward option five, hope with a hope.
And maybe, wow. You know, I'd like to, I'd like to at least hear from and see what the county commission either gives a, you know, a thumbs up or a thumbs down, approves it or doesn't approve it, of what we've already approved as this governing body. It doesn't sound like they've, I mean, it's over there, but they haven't received it. You know, I'd like to know what their thought process is for ours. I mean, we've given our thought process for theirs, and maybe have the mayor maybe send a letter over just asking for some information, or asking them to look at our agreement to see if that's something that they would approve or not approve, or something kind of what we're going through right now, give a better process. We could then move forward on option number five and have another meeting. The thing is, is we've been, between the two, the city and county, we've been discussing this for two years now, and trying to get through this process. I mean, we've, we've had pre-meetings, we've had meetings, we've had discussions. I mean, I mean, our card's on the table. We gave them the agreement. I would like to see what the county would like to, I mean, vote or not vote on it. I'd like to know what their decision is, and then we could move forward from there. And that's, that's just me.
Would it be fair to say that all these options are still viable for, in contingency with what the county decides on the agreement that we proposed already?
Well, yeah, I don't, yeah, I think they'd be viable, but I mean, I think that, you know, and Commissioner Sess is saying, hey, we would like an up or down vote, you know what I'm saying? We're not asking you to go and revamp the agreement, either vote yes or no, either thumbs up or thumbs down. And if you don't want to do the agreement, then I think then it's the option.
Then we can move forward.
Right. But at least we know that they've taken the agreement, and they've actually taken it up as a discussion item on their agenda. And then, you know, we can say, hey, these are, but I, and like you said, the meetings, and then the amount of staff time that we may change after change after change after change. And really, I think we've done that to the point where that consultant type agreement that we've approved, I mean, is really well done. And unless there's some...
Yeah, I think it's important to note, that isn't a product, that isn't a city product. That's the product of city and county negotiations.
Right, exactly.
As it stood late last summer in 2023, that was reduced to writing and presented for our governing body's consideration, and then once approved, passed over for their governing body's consideration. You know, so there's, I believe compromises built in that, that were based around the two governing bodies meeting together now. If the goalposts have moved yet again in these negotiations, then I think there's a difference between those being moved by staff persons and those being moved by either you or the county commission. And at this point in time, we don't know if the target's still the target or if the target's changed. We've, we've, we've been operating since last, late last summer, when you last met jointly with them, that the direction and the path that the two commissions put our collective staffs on is the target that we're supposed to continue to try to pursue. Until such time as you change that, we're not going to adjust target. And I would believe in the spirit of the negotiations between the two entities, until such time as the county government doesn't change, the county board of commissioners doesn't change that target, that the, again, the target is still the target, and the consultant type of agreement, we believe represents that, and at one point in time, both staffs agreed represented that.
Who did it up then? Sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, I'm for anything the county wants to try and figure out. I mean, I think we can obviously work together. Now, that puts, with reading through their interlocal agreement from the county, that kind of puts a little bit more work on our staff, as far as getting them involved and saying to a client that we got to get staff over here from the county, or take them over there to county and figure out what's the next step is from there. There's kind of a blaming game going on, too, is kind of, as to kind of what decisions are being made in that interlocal agreement. So that's the kind of holes that I want to fix, and try to just move forward with the county, if that's what it's going to take. I'd be for that as well, but I'm not sure, just moving forward with another meeting to kind of try to discuss what the next steps are is, is in my wheelhouse. But, so we can figure out one of these interlocal agreements to go move forward with, and I can certainly write a letter to the chairman and see if they can get this on their agenda to review and kind of give their consensus on that topic. So if that's what it takes.
Well, you know, I, I think, once we find out what the county's governing body decides, that gives us the next step on our direction on where we're going to go. That gives us a couple of options. Either one, to move forward with having a couple of commissioners visit, or the other option is to exit out of the agreement, and we figure out something, something differently. I mean, I hate to do that, but, I mean, the process just keeps going on and on and on. And we've come up with an agreement, and I've sat through the pre-meetings and the meetings on what each side came up with. We put that in the agreement. Now it's in their court, and I would like the mayor to at least correspond with the chair and, and see what, what they're going to decide.
And we passed the agreement in good faith, knowing that these discussions between the two staffs, and then, you know, bringing it to the commission, hoping that, and thinking that that would, the same thing would happen with that commission. But as far as, you know, putting the additional until this one's really an up or down vote, or they decide what's, what's not, you know, about this agreement, then I agree with you. I don't think we need to move any. But I do think you're, I mean, you going there, mayor, would make a difference. I mean, even if it's, you know, being there when they present this, you know, then that way we can, we can come back and say, hey, these are some changes that we need to make better.
Again, I agree with Commissioner Andrew. I mean, that was, it was something that we approved in good faith, that would go over to the county to give them that decisional process to make a vote, or, you know, give us some information on what their direction is from the best, best analysis and what both staffs worked on and putting together. So I would just like to see what the county commission has to say. And then, and then we can move forward as a governing body on that.
So do you declare, Christopher Sess, and you'd like just to have no action and see where the county commissioners decide?
At this time, yes. Just, well, I would like to have the mayor send correspondence to get the agreement on their agenda, so that the county could look at that and discuss it, make a decision on if they want to approve that agreement, that both staffs have worked on. And we've come to, from our, our understanding as a governing body, an agreement that works for both organizations or, or not. Then we can come back and then look at one of these other options. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Would it be prudent to add a deadline to that? Is that a feasible thing?
To adding what?
A deadline to...
Not, I know that they're taking up budget, and I mean, that would be, yeah, that'd be hard for them, but...
Yeah.
I think sooner than, sooner than later, but...
I think if, I think if, I think if the mayor does correspond, writes a letter to their chair, I mean, hopefully they will bring it up in the next meeting. I mean, it's been over there for almost a month, the agreement.
February 6th.
February 6th was when you adopted it, so...
So almost a month.
Four days from being two months ago.
Almost two months. Or two months, February, yeah, two months, so...
I mean, option two, or alternative to most is closest to what we want to do, but...
Proceeding with option two, given that you've already approved it...
Right.
Is asking them to consider it. And then, if my understanding's correct, the letter that you're asking, it sounds like the consensus of the commission maybe is directing the mayor to send, would say, you know, and if, you know, if you agree to that, great, we've got a plan moving forward. If you don't agree to that, you know, we're open to, we're open to sitting down and figuring out what, you know, what your desires are moving forward. But, you know, as disappointing as that would be, that we've been doing that for nearly two years to only be back at square one. I still think, you know, staying at the table with the county in any discussion has merit, because, you know, these services, if we go our separate ways, and there may be good reasons for going our separate ways on, on certain things, the residents of Garden City are also residents of Fannie County, and any service that we duplicate, Garden City residents get to pay for twice. And so I think it's in our interest to represent and operate, you know. And I think it's been the expressed goal of the city commission to try to reduce those instances of duplication as, as much as, as much as possible.
And I do appreciate your target, your target discussion. If it's moved, then, hey, we need to know that it's moved. But as far as we're concerned, it hasn't moved. And if it did move, this is the agreement that really has met that target, that, so...
Excuse me. Commissioners, if I could quickly interject, just talking about deadlines, as Commissioner Andrew brought up, I did want to point out that regarding option four, the termination pursuant to the existing interlocal agreement, there is a July 1st deadline for that. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any of these options that you, at this point in time, want to wholly take off the borders? Is it if they don't approve the consultant type, that everything's in play?
Well, I'd hate to limit our options. I mean, from my standpoint, I'd hate to limit our options as a, as a governing body. I... I just would like to know what the county commission thoughts are on our agreement that the two staffs between the city and county have worked on, that they've put into that agreement that kind of everybody came to consensus on. We approved that, again, back in February, and we've been waiting. And I would just like to know where the county stands from their governing body standpoint. If, if they want to approve it, great. If they don't, I'm open to further discussion, but I don't want to limit myself of, of taking any of the items off the table at this time.
I'm with the understanding that we have that July 1st, but I mean, if they don't take it up before then, then I mean, that would automatically, the, the agreement would be, would terminate. Is that what I'm understanding? And we'd have no agreement or?
No.
Or we just continue to operate into the old one?
Perpetual agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, renews, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've been in, we've actually provided these services since the 90s, maybe early 90s, if I'm not mistaken, but sometime in the 90s. The last time the agreement's been updated was 2015, but this is over 30 years of, of a, of a joint, joint staff.
And we have an excellent working, working relationship with the county we've had for years. I mean, you know, and again, this is why Garden City is, has been so successful is because we as, as not only one of the taxing entities, but also, I mean, all the different things that we've been able to do together. And so I think, you know, this idea of knowing that if they take this up, then we can really have some direction to move forward. And then those options, I think, then that will begin to limit those, hey, these are next, I think that will give us some, some really direction to say, hey, this is what we probably need to take up next.
And I didn't mean to put you in the, in your, in a bind, mayor. I was just saying, because you are the chair of the city commission, I'm just asking that if, if you're okay with it, send a letter over to their chair and just ask if that could be put on their agenda and reviewed.
Sure. I would be okay with that. And with your question too, Matt, on what, was there any, any item that we want to take off or just leave all the information on here for that presentation to them?
It seems to me that if we terminate the agreement, then we would have our citizens pay double set. That would be option four. Seems that option four would be kind of difficult for us. And then obviously, option two would be off the table.
If they didn't approve it.
If they don't approve it.
So if, you know, you're uncomfortable crafting a motion, I think the minutes, if you, if you took no action, but the minutes could reflect it was the consensus of the commission to have the mayor draft a, a letter indicating the desire of the city commission to have the county commission consider the agreement already approved and, and sent over for their consideration. And if that's not approved, a willingness by the city commission to enter into further negotiations.
I'm on board.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be a motion.
All right. Moving on then, if there's no other discussion on that item, would be the, would be 12B, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve an agreement between the city of Garden City and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for the grant in the amount of $2 million from the Kansas Moderate Income Housing American Rescue Plan Act Grant Program for the Sligo Station project. Alicia?
Sorry, no, wait, my, I was reloading. Mayor, commissioners, the Kansas Moderate Income Housing, the NIH program allows cities incorporated in Kansas with a population of fewer than 60,000 to request grants or loans for infrastructure and or housing development in rural areas. Recently, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, N I H, ARCO, request a proposal that allows for larger projects to submit funding requests. Grants or loans under the program will be limited to no more than three and a half million per authority. The communities must have a need for housing as determined in the most recent community housing assessment team report. There remains a need for housing for moderate housing in our city. Government agencies apply on behalf of developers. A resolution of support is required by the governing body, giving the city authority to apply for and participate in the program. On January 7th, 2023, the state commission adopted resolution number 3001-2023, allowing the state to submit an application to the Sligo Station project. On behalf of Hawkeye Development LLC, the property is generally located at 1801 Palace Drive. The developer was awarded $2 million NIH ARCO grant and $1.2 million Kansas Housing Investment Tax Credits. The current base of the project includes 62 units of studio, one bedroom and two bedroom units. The grant will be used solely for the construction costs of the homes. Staff is requesting the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city and K H R C regarding the project. City Attorney Cunningham have reviewed a draft of the agreement. Your alternatives are the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, or the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. And staff would recommend the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Does this, just one quick question on the NIH program. Does this have a, I think I saw it in there, a date where it needs to be expanded down at a certain time? Can't remember.
That is correct. And in the agreement, we have quite, when the project will need to be completed as well. So there are quarterly reports that we will be sending to K H R C as we work together with Sligo and Hawkeye Development.
It says August 31st, 2025.
Just found it, thanks. Okay. Any discussion on that?
It's an awesome, it's an excellent project.
Mayor, I make the motion, we have you authorize or sign the agreement with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. Second.
Okay, it's been first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass. Thank you, Alicia.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an agreement between the city of Garden City and Hawkeye Development Corporation for the grant in the amount of $2 million from the Kansas Moderate Income Housing American Rescue Plan Act Grant Program for the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
Mayor, commissioners, similar to the previous memo that we have, this agreement is strictly the city and Hawkeye Development. What we're asking is that you authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city and Hawkeye Development for this project. This agreement just will closely resemble the previous one, however, it lies within the developer to hold much of the information that we are required to report to K H R C on a quarterly basis. Your alternatives are the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Hawkeye Development Corporation, the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Hawkeye Development Corporation, or the governing body may provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign this agreement with Hawkeye Development Corporation, and there is no fiscal impact on the city.
So Alicia, so do both of, both Hawkeye and the city have to report, or is it just one or the other?
So it's just the city that.
Okay.
Works it, however, we are requesting Hawkeye to provide this.
So this is why that agreement, okay.
Correct.
I understand that.
Mayor?
I move we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Hawkeye Development Corporation.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Langraft, second. Okay, it's been motioned, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a development agreement for Hunter's Glen Phase 4. Alicia?
Mayor, commissioners, I apologize, I forgot I had an additional item before you. Oinko's Development Corporation is requesting to build the infrastructure improvements to connect Hunter's Glen Base 3A and 3B. Properties generally located northwest of Valley View Cemetery. Hunter's Glen Base 3A and 3B require supporting infrastructure that must run through a future phase of the development, Phase 4. This future base will not be fully developed at this time, but will be minimally developed to house the supporting infrastructure required for Base 3A and 3B. The intent of, is for the future base to be later, later developed as an R H A D district. And so at that time, the development agreement is required to regulate the construction of the infrastructure. Your alternatives today before you are, is the governing body may approve the agreement or the governing body may not approve the agreement, and staff would recommend the governing body approve this agreement.
Mayor, I move that we approve the development agreement for Hunter's Glen Phase 4.
Second.
It's been motioned, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve ratifying the 2024, 2025 strategic goals and objectives. At the 2024 City Commission Annual Retreat, the city commission was presented contextual information from staff regarding the state of the city's finances, the current draft capital improvement plan, citizen input from a recent community survey, and the reporting out on the performance related to the 2023, 2024 City Commission's strategic goals and objectives. Additionally, the commission reviewed the product of a prioritization exercise based solely on the estimated $127 million worth of capital projects related to the Parks and Recreation portion of the organization and identified in department master plans, the capital improvement plan and the community comprehensive plan. Following the morning session, the city commission brainstormed a large list of potential 12 to 18 month objectives. Each commissioner then had 18 dots, high science, to allocate across the list with the ability to place more than one dot on those things that they felt might be of even greater importance. Based on that dot exercise, city staff reviewed and organized the items receiving at least one dot into four overarching strategic goal categories. After some review and discussion by the commission, there was a consensus to move forward with a draft 2024 Goals and Objectives document with four strategic goal categories as described as follows. Develop and preserve strong relationships with our community, other communities and other levels of government. Two, upgrade and maintain existing public infrastructure and facilities. Three, encourage private development consistent with being the regional hub. And four, develop new public facilities. At the recommendation of the city commission, a second dot exercise was performed after the retreat, and each commissioner has a chance to assign 10 additional dots to the objectives listed under the four, four goal categories. Based on this information, a draft 2024, 2025 strategic goals and objectives document was prepared for the city commission's review at the March 19th, 2024 pre-meeting workshop. Based on feedback from that workshop, staff has revised the draft 2024, 2025 strategic goals and objectives document and is presenting it as a business item today for the purpose of it being ratified by the governing body and used to help guide the preparation of the city manager's proposed 2025 budget, as well as future staff work and city commission agenda items. The alternatives before you are to approve ratifying this goals document, to approve ratifying the goals document with modifications, or to not approve ratifying the goals document. Staff recommends approving or ratifying the 2024, 2025 strategic goals and objectives as presented.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ratifying of the 2024 to 2025 strategic goals and objectives as presented.
I second.
In motion, any further discussion? I'd just like to add that, appreciate all of the work that went into this to get, get it down to a smaller list. I think it came up to a, about a 300, well, I'm over exaggerating, not 300, but a big list.
A big list.
And just shrinking it down, getting staff involved to kind of minimize on what their goals and strategies are to achieve what they need right now versus long term. So appreciate all of that work with the staff getting involved. So there was a lot of thanks from some of the zoo members, staff out there, not head departments, but they kind of gave us a, a big thank you to us as well, but in my kind of, it doesn't, we weren't the ones that we should be thanking, giving, giving thanks from, I believe. I mean, it comes from a lot of others who just kind of share that same goal and view with, with the, with what we have here on paper. So thanks goes out to the staff and everyone involved, so. Anything else? Okay, we do have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of art grant funds as recommended by the art grant committee.
Commissioner, the art grant program was developed in 2012 as a form process by which art programs request funding from the city. The city commission allocated $15,000 from a social funding line item to fund the art grant program for the 2024 fiscal year. The city received seven applications, which all are attached, requesting a total of $37,750. The art grant committee recommends awarding $15,000 to the five applicants as listed in that memo. There are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may approve the art grant committee recommendation to award $15,000 to the total of the five applicants listed in the memo. Alternative two, the governing body may alter the art grants committee recommendation and award funding as the governing body sees fit. And three, the governing body may not approve the art grants committee recommendation and send the item back for the review. And the recommendation, art grant committee recommends approving, recommends the governing body approve the committee's recommendation to award $15,000 to the total of five applicants as listed in the memo. If approved, the city will expend $15,000 from the social funding in the capital improvement division of the general fund as much as you have to answer the questions that you guys have.
Any discussion on questions?
No. Mayor, I move that we approve the art grants committee's recommendation to award $15,000 to a total of the five applicants that they list.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Item 12G and 12H are both executive sessions, neither of which there's any anticipated action following. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda and then the commission reports, we can shut down the, the broadcast or when you go into executive session. So if that's, okay, we'll move forward with consent agenda. Unless someone wants to pull off an item and discuss it separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda, items 13A through 13E.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda, items 13A through 13E. Second.
Okay, it's been motioned, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
All right, we're ready for commissioner reports.
Commissioner reports, we got Commissioner Andrew at first.
So I just want to say thank you for the airport tour. That was quite amazing. It's, well, it's going to be an incredible facility for, I hope it'll last as long, if not longer, than the, the one that before, but it was really in the thought and the detail that went into the airport, I think, and some of the great changes that have been made to make it more user friendly. It was really fun to see people already getting ready to line up for flight, and I mean, I love, when Michelle says it's like a real airport, and so, you know, I mean, it wasn't airport before, but you know, some of the things that you, in the larger airports, I think it makes a big difference. It's also a great place when you fly into Garden City. It really talks about the testimony that we have. love, when Michelle says it's like a real airport, and so, you know, I mean, it wasn't airport before, but, you know, some of the things that you, in the larger airports, I think it makes a big difference. It's also a great place when you fly into Garden City. It really talks about the testimony that we have, making sure that not only can you get here, but when you get here, you're going to be treated very excellently. I also want to say thank you to the staff, especially staying with the whole, with the inter-local agreement. I know this has been something that's taken a lot of time, and I mean, I know that we have a great working relationship with the county, and so I'm looking forward to their discussion on the consultant type of agreement. I think it will be a really great discussion, and believing that something very productive will come out of that. I mean, there's lots of things that have been happening in Garden City. I was, the tornado, the tornado event with the snow and, yeah, that was very shocking, and I learned a lot about that. But I do think it's important that, you know, a lot of people look to the city to lead as far as, you know, as information, because there isn't anything out there. I searched for several radio stations, and being the weekend, a lot of them is pre-programmed. The television didn't say anything, and so, you know, that's part of living in rural Kansas where, I mean, we will have to make some decisions, and I'm glad that I learned a lot about the tornado sirens. I didn't realize, a lot of people kept asking why the three sirens, but it makes sense. And so I really appreciate that information being presented. Also, have had so many people say thank you to the city for, and the city staff and the city workers, you know, for cleaning up the city. It's a lot, that's, there's a lot out there. And so seeing them do that, not, it makes the opportunity for our city not only to be beautiful, but also just the additional hours, and I know the things that have to be pushed here and there, and so a lot of people have stopped and said, hey, thank you for continuing that. I mean, especially in tough times, you know, lots of times there's lots of things that we can cut, but this is one of the things that they really look forward to, and they said this is something that makes a big difference. And it's also kind of like a citywide garage sale, so if there's something you need or you see that it's yours, so you can also do it that way, so. That's what one lady told me. She goes, this is kind of like a garage sale, and I said, okay, that's a great, that's a great idea. But I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, and also I really appreciate just the opportunity as far as that we have and to live in Western Kansas and all the things that are really happening out here in southwest Kansas, so thank you.
All right, questions? That's enough.
Kind of echo the Commissioner Enroe's thoughts. Great pre-meeting and the tour of the new airport terminal, Phase Two is coming along really nicely, and I'm really excited to see it opening and accepting passengers, and that'll be sometime in May, so look for that process to open. It's a great, you know, it's another great doorway to our community, and really showcases Garden City and who we are and how, how we're growing and becoming a regional hub of Western Kansas. Also, spring cleanup has started across the community, as it's been mentioned, for the next two weeks, so just check the city's website for days that the city crews will be in your area. They've broken it up into a number of areas, so just be on the lookout for that, and get ready to discard your items in an appropriate manner. I want to congratulate Dr. Ryan Ruda, President of Garden City Community College. He was recently recognized as one of the top 10 inspiring education leaders for 2024. It's great to see that we have leaders in our community getting recognized for what they're doing. It's great to get those recognitions, especially other leaders in our community. As Commissioner Enroe was talking about, and we talked about during the presentation, you know, communication, we're always looking at communication, and communication is kind of vital in emergency events, and, you know, if you sign up and receive those text alerts from the Garden, from Garden City of My GCKS, it's really your one-stop source for communication from the community, instead of trying to search different Facebook pages. It really does give you all the information from city alerts, you know, if there's power outages or water breaks, or if they're closing streets for any sort of need. I would definitely sign up for that service, because it, it's all right there on your phone. Text hello at 2-855-955-4257. A great information source that our city has provided our citizens. And then I just, again, another great thing that was mentioned today was adopting a dispatcher, a communicator, kind of a neat, neat item for our, you know, something thinking outside the box, but again, really celebrating our dispatchers and communicators that we have. And again, I just want to remind everyone to fly local and shop local, as it helps support the community and helps us to become a regional hub in Western Kansas. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Landgraf.
So I just want to echo what the other commissioner said as well about the airport tour. It was great being able to see that going through, looking forward to it being opened, as it really does make us a regional travel hub for Western Kansas. Also, thank you just for the presentation regarding the tornado. Earlier in January, we had the blizzard, and now getting that information, now we have a tornado, so hopefully we're done with natural disasters for a little bit, but it's nice having that information, being able to have that going on, and thank you as well for giving us that information on Sunday as well to the entire community. I know that took out part of your guys' day, so thank you for doing that as well. I also want to talk about, so Garden City Journal, Sean and Shannon did interviews with different people for a total of 12 hours, I think it was 24 different members of the community. I think there's just so much useful information in those interviews, so if you see, they have an entire list of all the different people speaking, so if there's anything that interests you at all, I highly recommend going to those videos, looking and just watching them as the, I know I went through and watched so much of it, and I learned so much about what was going on in our community, so.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Winn.
Crisis risen, crisis risen. So happy Easter to all who celebrate. This is probably my favorite holiday of the year. Great journey response, I think. We are very blessed to have a lot of staff that are ready and on their feet, to not just listen to facts that are far away from us, but to see what's actually here and happening. Also is very awesome to see our airport and the progress, the tremendous progress that we have. I've spent quite a few hours on layovers at other airports, and must I say, our airport is definitely going to look a lot better than LaGuardia, Boston, and even parts of DFW. My commission report is a little bit longer. It was a very exciting and joyful last two weeks. First, I was able to speak and present with JAG, Jobs for America's Graduate in Kansas, to speak with them about how we can choose and align our jobs with the gifts that are given to us. And then I also served as a judge for the high school forensics competition, and last week, spent some awesome time with the Live Well Resist group. There were a total of about, I think, six or eight schools from southwestern Kansas. To really dive with my story, but it was such an honor to be on the same bill as Dr. Ruda, just never would have imagined I would speak alongside him. And then later that same day, I was with Sean Collin and former Commissioner Shannon Dick, just to be able to witness and be on an episode with all the movers and shakers in southwest Kansas. I think we, in our area, in a little bubble, could be our own little country, and I think we would survive pretty well, a lot better than most other places. Additionally, I was also asked to be on the staff versus students basketball game at the high school. Had a lot of airballs, but, you know, you always have your off days. I think, so we were down 2 to 12, came back 12 to 12 in the last minute, and they shot a three, and that was, that was history.
It's March.
It's March, yeah. Could I, I have a question for Mike Merhead. I've received a few questions about Eighth Street Lights, and we talked about it before, but could you share some of your thoughts on that, pertaining to the lights are kind of dim north of Eighth Street, Streetlights?
Sure. Commissioners, we did talk earlier about it. The question was, why are some of the streetlights so dim? And it's not just North Eighth Street, but it's across the whole community. What happened was 10 years ago, when we, the city, decided to make a change from high pressure sodium to the LED lighting, those lights that were purchased that's up there still were guaranteed for 10 years to keep the same amount of lumens that they did at that time. That warranty has since expired, and the lights continue to get dimmer and dimmer as we go on. What we found is we found new manufacturers that make a much brighter, longer-lasting life light, and we're in the process of changing those out systematically as we go across the community. If there are key intersections that reported us by PD or fire that for whatever reason, we will come and change those out quickly. The other one will just want to take some time, but that's the whole point of that. And the reason we did it was a cost savings on energy at the time. It ultimately saved the city $140,000 a year in energy costs when we made that switch. And the high-pressure sodium lights that we took out, they're no longer available anyway, but I believe our lights are not shining purple when they start fading.
Yeah. Thank you. Sounds good. And that's all for me.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I want to echo whatever, I mean, I don't want to repeat everybody, but I would echo everybody's comments as well, so, and yes, the world grows here in Garden City. That's why we got a lot of leaderships and development going on around in Garden City, so I'd just like to kind of state some of those leaders kind of that were in the room today. Lana and her staff with bringing in developers like Mike Snoggrass and Dr. Hannigan, who are investing in the community here and doing what they do as far as growing our city, so kudos for them. Also Matt Allen with those agreements as well on his efforts to continue to talk through those, with those developers and getting them here into Garden City. So thank you for your leadership and dedication. Spring is here, things are greening up, colors are around, so I look forward to just kind of seeing what Clay Payne has out on the golf course going on with some new, the hole number six opening up, so that'll be exciting for me to get out there and kind of tear up some green for him, so. Really, I am bad at golf, so just a heads up to Clay out there, so. And Nolan for his efforts too, as far as getting the repairs on, on, you know, fields and things like that, turf that's here in the community, so just looking forward to going out and those community members who talked about going out and walking the trails, one of the areas that they like to walk to is the cemetery, so that looks really nice up there ever since we took the fence down and stuff, so that's, this has been a real good place to go out and walk and take your family. So I do have a chance to do some speeches with real men, real leaders coming tomorrow, so it'll be here in this room. Looking forward to just giving that to those young, young future leaders here in our community, so. But I, I do just kind of like to elaborate on, on the leadership and everybody who's involved in growing the city, so city staff and everyone involved, so appreciate the efforts and continued efforts in that, so. With that, I think we'll now go ahead and start the motion for the executive sessions.
Yeah, if it's all right to take those in reverse order, the first one, I think we'll have Jennifer, myself, well, the first one, which is the second one on the agenda. Jennifer, myself, Mike, and Fred. And we would need 10 minutes.
Could we incorporate a break before also, before we start those, and then?
How long of a break would you like?
I mean, I don't, won't take long.
We can meet at 2:50?
Yeah.
And take it until 3:00 PM?
That'd be nice.
Is that okay? And the, this is an executive session for preliminary discussions prior to the acquisition of real estate for the specific purpose of discussing land acquisition that would potentially be available for city services.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319 P6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property and for the specific purpose of discussion possible land acquisition related to city services, starting at 2:50 and lasting for 10 minutes.
Second.
Sorry. You need to add also just legal counsel, Jennifer Cunningham, Mike Merhead, and Fred Jones, along with Matt Allen in the meeting as well. Sorry, it's one of those things. Correct counsel?
Okay.
Second that still.
Okay, it's been motioned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Drinks on the fridge across the hallway if anybody's interested.